We, well, I guess we'll call this a special meeting to order of work session that we have. Yes, roll call would be in order. Ms. Lawson.
Roll call. Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez. Brenneman.
Here.
Haley.
President.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. It's time I would entertain motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second is there discussion. Actually, I do have a point of information. There's been an addition to the agenda that we have for item six, ethics discussions. I don't know what provision there could be for executive session for that to, and it might be personnel matter. We traditionally have ethics discussions in executive session. So with that exception, or I guess it would be a substitute motion that we would accept the agenda as presented, except that the ethics discussion would move to executive session.
Yes.
Ms. Lawson.
Yes, thank you. Discussions about elected personnel are different than non-elected personnel. And with the exception of litigation, those happen, those would happen in an open session. So it's different than personnel because of the statute talks about non-elected personnel as a reason to go into executive session, but does not grant that same reason for elected personnel in executive sessions.
Will, will you be able to provide that in that some of this discussion is being hastily put together? And has not had an opportunity to be fully vetted, and it is yet a personnel discussion regarding the elected. As you said, it is a matter of employee-related matter. Would you be able to provide that?
I can get you the citation for that.
Could you?
Yes.
Pending that, I still would want to see us have a discussion among the board and those relevant personnel in what has been traditionally a, an executive session in that it is a personnel matter and it could be considered sensitive and should not be allowed outside the confines.
Angie, is it that basically we have specific exemptions under the Open Meetings Act for specific items? But the only exemption we get for personnel is only for non-elected personnel. So.
That is correct.
So a, an executive session under that statute would be a violation of the open meetings.
Okay. That's correct unless, of course, we're talking about a claim of litigation.
Sure.
So there is a substitute motion and second on the floor pending some clarity brought. Call for a roll call.
Point, point of order. I want to make sure we know the motion that we're voting on. I think Tom's motion was to approve the agenda as written. Do you have a substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Yes, the substitute motion is to approve the amended work session agenda as presented, with the exception of item six for the ethics discussion that has been added in the last day that pertaining to a personnel matter, it should be held as we have before in executive session with not just board members, but relevant members in addition, certainly a GM or legal counsel. And I would suggest our newly retained ethics administrator.
These are, these are chief compliance officers.
Let's see this right here.
Oh.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, relevant personnel.
So I must advise again, so to, to conduct at the ethics discussions in an open meeting or in an executive section would be a violation of the Kansas Open Records or Open Meetings Act.
And I think you'll provide us when we use that point chapter and verse because I, I don't understand or know of that distinction personally. That was the substitute motion. And during the second.
A second.
Motion second. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawson.
What do you do? You vote on the substitute first, then if it goes down, then you're back to the original.
Yes, and again, I would, again, I would advise that that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
Okay. A point, one question.
Yes.
Good. So I think he's, I think what I understood him to say, maybe he, maybe I should let him clarify before I say. Let me let him clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Wakes. If there is provided the distinction that she'll have, Ms. Lawson's looking forward diligently. I think she's jeopardizing or going through it right now. It shows clearly how a discussion of personnel that are elected are distinguished from those traditional ones as we have had in executive session. Then should this motion prevail, then we will proceed in open forum with the discussion. I believe we would. Should she not have that available and it is not a clear distinction, then we will have, as we normally do, all personnel matters, and certainly since I've been on the board, regardless, have been held in executive session and then brought back for discussion after that. Yes, ma'am.
Angie, do you want the statute number?
Yes, thank you.
I'd say seventy-five dash four three one nine.
Thank you. I have been.
No, that's okay.
Trying to do this and talk and.
Subpart B.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, subpart B. Subparagraph.
Yes, one. Justifications for recess to closed or executive meetings may include the following, may only include the following, and the first one is to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. And I appreciate you providing that site because I, it's not multitasking very well.
That's okay.
And just to clarify, there's not a later exception in that list that includes elected personnel?
There is not.
A very good question.
And do you want to take a moment, Mr. President, to review that provision?
Well, I, I will do that along the, during the course of the meeting. Thank you. I want to see, you know, reading contextually with everything else. But with, for the sake of exigency to move through this agenda, with the permission of the second, I will draw the motion and we will go through the original motion.
I'll draw.
Go back on the original motion to approve the amended work session agenda as, as presented. Any further discussion? Ms. Lawson, please, roll call.
Roll call. Parker.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley. Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Board update, GM update, Mr. Ash.
We don't have really anything else to update outside of what Lee's going to talk about. We did have some challenge pulling this meeting together, so I appreciate the flexibility and everybody's schedule. But it really marries up with the fact that last week the personnel were onsite at Quandero doing their phase two environmental study and having some other meetings and things here onsite at BPU with leadership and finance. So we, we had to try to fit this in a few of that. So we had good information to give you an update on. And then knowing that it's a little bit of an inconvenience, we're going to be right back here on the first. And so appreciate the flexibility and support. With that, Mr. President, it would be on to the Quandero project.
Right. Do it.
Thank you.
Doesn't tell me if this is not the appropriate time, but I was going to ask for approval for traveling to a conference. Would board update be the appropriate place for that? Or I can save it till the end?
Yes.
So with the board's permission, I would like to attend a future forward conference in Topeka on October eighth and ninth. I believe one of our employees, Nick Moreno, was on one of the panels at that as well.
This is Rose. So moved.
New discussion. Ms. Lawson, please, roll call.
Roll call. Parker.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
So Quandero project update, if you would, please.
Sure. Thank you. This is Lee Mulholland. I'm compliance officer for BPU. And I wanted to start off this, this is a high-level update. First and foremost, it's high-level. And to really lead off the conversation that things seem to be moving in a positive direction. So and I'll kind of get into some of that as I kind of work through my notes here. And then just on the project timeline, just to kind of remind the board, in May of twenty twenty-five, we signed an option purchase agreement. The city executed a listed power transition. In June, the following month, between June and July, we worked with them on a number of due diligence items. But we also worked with them to come up with an environmental, a phase two study, which we, which we conducted last week. It took a little longer to get through to conduct the phase two because it took a while for power transitions to get approval from the Corps. You know, the, the site is adjacent to the, to the levee and there's some rules around boring and going deep down to groundwater. And so you need to get the Corps approval for that. But we should got in August. And so we scheduled the phase two for last week, which is probably Monday through Friday, like eight to six every day. It was, it was a long week. We decided to take split samples. We tested soil and groundwater in fifteen areas around the site, really all over, starting in the far northeast corner, all the way down to the south part and all the way to the west side of the property. The, the areas that were tested aligned with our environmental phase one report that we had done in preparation for our due diligence on the site. The samples primarily tested for hydrocarbons, so gasoline, fuel oil, diesel fuel. We may be, depending on this, on the results of the, of the samples, which we should get sometime at the mid to latter part of next week. We may have a reporting obligation to KDHE if we have anything that comes back. There is one site that is adjacent to plant two where the soil looks like there was some fuel oil there, but we are not certain. We'll wait for the test results to, to do that, to report that. We also will have, you know, to work with power transitions depending on the, the sample results on entering into what's called an environmental use control with KDHEs. So, you know, when you have some issues on a site like, like Quandero, where you may have some, some hazards that may be in the soil, you know, we'll have to enter into a program with KDHE to make sure that that area is not used for anything like, like putting drinking wells in. So we'll be working with them on that. During due diligence stays or over the summer, we reviewed old drawings of the plant and found that there were three areas on site that where there was a bottom ash was used and a foundation of two buildings and then also in the far northeast corner of the site where a rail guard was, was at one point in time a railway yard. And back fifty years ago, that was very common to use fly ash and bottom ash as a byproduct. It, it creates a lot of stability for buildings and whatnot. This is kind of a tricky topic to talk about because the coal combustion residual rules are currently in review by EPA. So they're actually part of those family of rules that they're reviewing to see if they may make some changes to the final existing rules. But I kind of started from a very conservative perspective. So the rules that, that actually are under, were under the Biden administration, which are up for public consultation right now. And there were some rules around beneficial use. And so we think we can fold those buildings into that. The quantity was not that much. And, and it was very, you know, regularly used for, as I mentioned, structural foundation. And, you know, forty, fifty years ago, so it was part of just a normal design for buildings. So we think we can fold that in. Another thing that has popped up during due diligence is that there is a transmission pipeline that runs right down through the middle of the property. It is a Southern Star natural gas transmission pipeline. And there is an easement on that part of the property. And so we were concerned for a couple of weeks about that site being a risk to developing it. But we seem to have worked through that risk with power transitions and they feel more comfortable about being able to, to reconfigure the site to not have anything built on around that. But they're working with Southern Star to, to, on that. And I mentioned to them that if they needed some help from us, that we would be, you know, happy to, to support them on that.
It's probably important to note that we were aware of that easement.
Yeah.
Have any record of it. It was.
Because it would have been granted by the UG.
That's true.
Or the element at the time.
Hundred and forty feet deep.
It's as deep as a hundred and forty feet. It looks like they started boring on far south side where the street is, and they went under the railroad tracks, starting at like six to eight feet deep. And then it continued going pretty deep and underneath the river, you know, and across the river. And so they're sensitive about, they, they require permission to build over it. And I think power transitions is still trying to figure out what they're going to do. But because of that, I think we always had mentioned that it sounded like they were going to start to develop that side of the property first, if that would be phase one. And now they're going to start to, it sounds like they've transitioned and where the old plant three is, full yard, that they'll be developing that side of the, the property first. So that would be the phase two. So next steps are, now that the phase two has been completed, we're going to turn our attention back to the turnkey remediation agreement. And we have our, our meeting scheduled tomorrow morning to kind of talk through that with their attorney and our attorney and, and Delaney's attending that, that meeting, I believe, Angela. So we're going to be, that's really important to get through. I'm very hopeful after they've been here on site that we kind of will be able to work through some of the terms that are very important to us, which are the, the assumed liabilities, the excluded liabilities, which is really kind of what makes us feel really good about, about moving forward on this. Because the value to us, as I explained last week to them, because they were here on site too for, for three of those days last week, is the remediation, the environmental remediation and the ongoing remediation that we may have. And, you know, when you think about a project like this, you need to think about kind of what you need to do in phases. The biggest risk to, to us and to any project when you're trying to remediate a site as complicated as Quandero is those first couple of years. So looking at the demolition, the remediation of the, the above ground structures, anything that you have to remediate below the ground. And then the first couple of years probably would be, so to make sure that we've got that right, you know, risk remedied, you know, during that, it's going to be really important. So we really anticipate activities to start picking up. We are going to be meeting tomorrow onsite another remediation company, a demolition company. They wanted to come back to reassess the asbestos in the old plant too. So we're going to be onsite making sure that they've got the, you know, the, the, the right, right of time and support that they need to do that. We also, I was talking to Jeremy and sent him a note over the weekend that we really need to expand the group to have a bigger, I'll call it the operations group, because this is a really big project and it's really, really complicated. And so, you know, I, I think probably in the next two weeks, as we've worked towards trying to finalize remediation agreement, then, you know, activities will really start to pick up. And so, you know, we'll have to be available to support that. But it is coming in a, a good direction, I think. Andrew's not here today, but, you know, in terms of getting through the phase two and, and I think we'll be able to, now that we know kind of what some of the hazards may be, just getting through the remediation agreement. They were here last week. This, our senior people were here and also met with Andrew and, and they have decided to participate in the ERAs process. So that is that interconnection agreement. They'll be able to, to submit an, an application into Southwest Power Pool and then, and then, you know, be at the front of the queue to build new generation on site. And, and it sounds like they're going to be putting down the down payment of that, which is several million dollars.
That, that's big for us because that's.
ERAs, yeah.
That's out of pocket somewhere for, you know, at least four million dollars, maybe as much as six. And so with them being, having a comfort level where they are today to say, hey, we would, we would feel comfortable putting up that money. I think it's really great news for all of us to hear. And we did meet yesterday, Lee and I, or some time and kind of put together that operations working group. And so some of you, maybe you have or haven't gotten the email yet, but you'll be asked to, to sit all of that because of just your expertise with the area. There's a lot of assets in there that, you know, we want to recover. There's, you know, there's water assets in there operating that we have to be mindful of and everything. So it really is going to take a cross-functional team to tackle everything.
So, I mean, I'll just, but it sounds like it's, although we don't have a purchase agreement, that's, you know, and our turnkey remediation agreement we'll still be working through. But I, I feel more confident that we're heading down the right path. So it'll be really great for the community.
And there's just been a lot more activity on the site. So with them being here last week and giving this update to help, you know, telling you what's coming, it's just going to be more and more people moving around down there. And if they have shifted to that east part, the demolition is going to be much more noticeable because it's going to be on the largest structure first. So all the folks in the community are going to start seeing that when, you know, still got some hurdles to get there. But if that's being the shift, the tallest of the eyesore is, is going to be what gets worked first. So.
So anyway, so that's, any questions, see you guys. Happy to.
So, and I know this is going to be hard to, to ballpark, but I mean, we've got to get through the turnkey remediation agreement. We would actually, and that's, say that's successful. Then we have to get through purchase agreement, right? At what point in time will the community be aware of? I guess the. How long are we looking at something new to be built on that site?
Twenty twenty-seven. Yeah.
Okay. So several years out. Okay.
I mean, they'll probably start, I would think, by the, sometime next year. I mean, it's the, the, your incentive to get the data centers onsite and, and plugged in as soon as they possibly can. But the first.
There's another incentive too. If you remember, the first year of the diligence period or the option purchase was this much. The second year is two and a half times or whatever. So. They've got some incentive to get through that. And even the, the TRA here has been started, the teams have started stepping through that. So that's underway as well.
You know, I mean, certainly several of us have seen pushback on this particular project as well that I have shared with the BPU team. I think the more communication that power transitions can have with the community that will be around that particular project, I think the better.
So, well, that's very good feedback. And Amber's coming to our meeting tomorrow. We're having an internal meeting kind of with key people internally, and so I'll pass that on to her. She's already been in touch with their PR. They've hired a PR firm on this particular project. They're putting together a rendering of the site, which is kind of like starting off with the old buildings, demolishing it, building up with the new. So they're going to be sharing that for, where they finalize that. And so I think, I mean, the biggest message is, is that is the environmental liability for remediation and the economic benefit to, to the community. Because when you think about it, I mean, when I said, mentioned earlier, the, the value to us is the remediation, the environmental remediation is significantly reduces our environmental liability. But it also is the, the economic benefit to the community in terms of we've got a new, look, big customer. And I, and I mentioned to Andrew, but we need to, we need to, we need to look at the cash flow and discount that back to the present. But I know that's probably in the millions of dollars in today's dollars. And so, I mean, that, I, I just can't imagine what benefit that's going to be to the, the community.
Well, and, and I think, you know, I, I mean, the community, you know, I mean, look, who doesn't want to get more revenue into the community, be it through property tax or, you know, utility sales tax or whatever, right? But, you know, environmental concerns are obviously at the forefront of what folks are concerned about. And so I think the more that, more education that can be communicated to, you know, folks who are interested in this and more information shared, the better. It's more yay.
Okay, that's good.
And in the spring, you know, we voted on this, the UG approved, moving forward. Are there other governance hurdles between here and twenty twenty-seven? I know right now we're in the phase where, you know, the studies are being done and there's further negotiations. Will they have to bring anything back to the, the commission to approve or to this board to approve?
I think they're working through on the permitting side with the UG. But in terms of the purchase, Angela, I, you'll have to speak to that. I'm not sure about. I don't believe that, that requires commission approval.
No, unless something were to change about the purchase. The county administrator was authorized to sign off on the final sentence.
Thank you.
You all have a best jobs. Okay. Well, thank you. So I'll keep you guys updated. And I'll pass the communication piece over to Amber. She's, I know, just think of something.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have ethics discussion. And should we invite our, I don't know who is, who cares to start this, or the agenda? Would it be to welcome our ethics, Mr. Brown?
All right. Thank you.
Well, board, thank you for having me here this evening. Because everyone recalls, you, you short weeks ago, you appointed me to be your interim ethics administrator as well as your ethics commission as you continue to look at your ethics code. And I know this was also, this was printed primarily because of the demise of your former ethics administrator, Ms. Ruth Benning. Part of the duties as the ethics administrator and the ethics commission is to ensure that your ethics policy is being administered, that it's being enforced. Both roles operate somewhat simultaneously and that they share similar duties to review ethics questions that come forward, to conduct investigations and to issue advisory opinions. There are two different conduits that happen when a question of ethics comes up. If it's a question involving an employee of the BPU, the matter is reviewed, it is investigated, and then an advisory opinion is issued generally to the general manager and the ethics administrator can make a recommendation. And the general manager can handle it as it sees fit. If it's a pretty large issue, that employee issue may come in front of this board. I'm not familiar if that's happened in the past. However, when it's a matter where there's a question being raised about an elected official, matter starts out the same. It's reviewed, it's investigated. Where it differs though, is that any advisory opinion that comes forward, the current ethics policy states that that is to go to the general manager, the attorney and the board. And the reason this is done, I wasn't, you know, part of when this policy was formulated, but the ethics policy provides that no elected official could be found guilty of violating the ethics policy without a majority vote of this board. So I've communicated with the board about a question regarding an elected official, a potential ethics violation, specifically dealing with section one fifteen of the ethics policy, which was a misuse of public office, which requires an intentional misuse of office of using the prestige of office for the private gain of oneself or another. There's an exception to that policy for normal constituent services. That is not what we're talking about today. And so that's what we're here for today to discuss. And so that's what we're here for today, to discuss, um, this question that was asked. And, um, yes, that's a, the summary of my report. I've issued no opinion per se, because that's for the, the board's discussion and determination.
So, Missy, just to be clear, so you have not made a recommendation to the board, but it is up to the elected board to make the determination based on the opinion we received.
That's correct for policy.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, did you prepare, have you prepared a, a written statement for review from your, from your investigation or from your?
Yes, I prepared an advisory opinion, which I sent, um, to all the board members.
I know, and I was just gonna follow up and see if everybody has been in receipt or just.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and proceed if, if I may, Mr. President. Um, so, you know, the advisory opinion and the president has just determined that everyone has had a chance to review the advisory opinion that we received, correct? Does anybody have any questions about the advisory opinion? Because we have Ms. Brown here to answer them if we need to. No questions? Oh, go ahead, sir.
I, I just, the first, how did, what, the, how did the investigation go? What, uh, you know, what, were people, were witnesses sworn in? Were they not sworn in? What, you know, what were the findings or, or is there some? I mean, we've got, we've got, you know, a few pages, but what, what did the evidence, what, what evidence was presented and how was it presented? And what do we base our decision on?
Okay. I am, um, I think those are good questions. I'm trying to be mindful of my views to pers, pers, um, to preserve confidentiality. Because it is an awkward situation, admittedly, to be here to discuss something that we're trying to maintain confidentiality, but knowing that it's now a public discussion. So the investigation proceeded because I was, because I was given a question about event, event that occurred during, um, the upcoming open enrollment. Um, with part of that, um, question, I set up interviews with former staff members as well as the elected official that was involved. I had, um, and that's with, I think I had a a good discussion with the elected official who was very cooperative and spent considerable time meeting with me. And then I had discussions with one current employee and, um, two former employees about the matter. I asked I T to run an email search and then reviewed documents regarding the open enrollment, reviewed the emails that were searched, and then had additional follow-up discussion with the elected official. And the matter that was complained upon, I do not believe that there was any dispute that it occurred. The dispute was the intent behind whether or not somebody was. I'm not sure how far to go, but, um, the underlying element, there was no dispute. It's just whether or not there was a belief, an intentional belief that the action was permissible or not. I also reviewed the, um, policy documents, the definitions of covered persons and verified that they were the same definitions that were in place in, um, in the past. And to discuss procedures with how one could do open enrollment and what processes were done. And there, at the end of the investigation, the question remains was whether or not it was intentionally done with attempt, you know, just say to be deceptive on the policy versus whether or not, um, the elected official had a reasonable belief that it was permissible to proceed as they proceeded. Is that answered?
No. I mean, I, I, I mean, how do we make a, how as a board? Do we make a decision if we don't have the information to make the decision on? I mean, do, are you gonna, do you make a recommendation that when, during the investigation that you found that it was willful or that you found that it wasn't willful?
I did not make a determination on it because the policy, the ethics policy in place prohibits the ethics administrator from making a recommendation about an elected official. And specifically states out that the board is the only one who can make that finding. So during my communication, I tried to present both sides of the story um, that I have received, tried to be balanced on what I was advised by the elected official, as well as staff and former staff.
So I guess maybe a corollary to that. That would be the case in any hypothetical involving board members under this policy. We shouldn't, we shouldn't take the lack of a recommendation as a lack of evidence or an abundance of evidence. It's just the policy is written that that determination must be made by this body rather than the administrator.
Correct.
And without doing the investigation ourselves and without the, how do we make that determination?
Well, I mean, that's why we have an ethics administrator. I mean, truly, I mean, this has to be done by somebody who's
Right.
the, the, the investig, investigatory part of this has to be done by somebody who is not us.
That's right.
Right? And so that's the whole, it, it, I guess, uh, in, in my opinion, that's the whole reason that we have an ethics administrator to administer the policy that we all are, you know, required to adhere to.
And I, I agree with that, but.
So we don't conduct the investigation.
But.
We, we have a fact pattern in front of us. And, uh, we are being asked to make a determination regarding whether or not section one fifteen of our ethics policy uh, has been violated. I mean, am I saying that correctly? Is that, that's what we as a board need to determine.
That's correct.
Based on the opinion that we've received.
And I.
Based on the investigation you conducted.
Correct.
I mean, does I know, does that help?
No.
Doesn't help.
I mean, yes, it, it helps. And I understand that part of it. But to make a decision on the letter, the, the advisory opinion that we received would be very hard to do.
I, I guess, if it helps, I can share my thought process after reading that. I don't know if others will have the same or not, but, um, I think it was very clear that is an improper benefit. Again, question is whether or not that was intentionally pursued or not. Um, as I read through it, I think there are conflicting accounts between elected official and staff members. Um, so if the way there are different stories being told, um, as I think through it, um, I think that someone, uh, elected to this board and, um, with the credentials that they bring to that, likely knows how to fill out an enrollment form and what is acceptable and what is not. Um, I think, I don't have any reason to doubt the veracity of staff testimony, current and former. I think there's a lot less incentive, um, in their case to say anything other than exactly what they think happened and their, their honest assessment of that. And so, um, I'm having a hard time reading that report and knowing the facts that are laid out in that. And having gone through enrollment processes myself many times, having a hard time coming down on the side of that it was an an honest mistake rather than a than an attempt to get an extra benefit.
Yeah. And, and I mean, I certainly don't disagree. Um, having been through the enrollment prospect, enrollment process many times with many employers and having, you know, truth to hide information to my employers regarding my dependents. Um, you know, I've been asked to prove that these folks are my dependents and I've done so. And, um, you know, I, I, I know better than to, I, I mean, I know the consequence of, uh, you know, potentially, uh, intentionally adding a dependent to an insurance policy that is not allowed to receive, uh, those benefits.
And I agree with that. And I, I, you know, and think that probably was, you know, that it happened. I mean, it's undisputed that it happened. My problem that I have was if it happened in twenty twenty one, why is, did it last until twenty twenty five? Now that's something that we need to take up with the general manager and, you know, that doesn't have any really bearing on the fact that, that, that it did happen. But, you know, it, it probably could have been stopped a lot earlier.
Well, and if I, if I give my, um, you know, a personal example of me signing up for insurance with prior employers, um, I have never been asked after my initial enrollment to further produce, because nothing changed in my marital status, nothing, you know, nothing changed. And so I was, you know, it, it, it's incumbent upon me who's signing up for the benefit, you know, to be truthful and honest with, you know, the insurance carrier, right? I mean, there are penalties for that outside of just having your insurance ripped away, right? I mean, there's, there's civil penalties, there's criminal penalty, you know, and I mean, I, you know, I mean.
In, in reading it, you know, information was requested according to the, the report. The information was never given. It was requested again, it was never given. At some point in time, you said, you just say, hey, if you're not gonna give me, if I don't get the information, then it's over with.
You know, I, I hear you and, and I, you know, in reading through that, I put myself in the position of, um, you know, a, a, a team member, you know, and in this case with B P U, it could be easily anybody else and saying, oh, this, you know, the C E O wouldn't give me, you know, his or her information. And in this case, it's an elected official, right? I mean, you know, I mean, come on, I, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I, I understand the thought process. I truly do. Don't get me wrong, but, you know, some point in time, I mean, you know.
Again, that doesn't have any bearing on whether it happened or not. What that bearing on is policies that weren't followed by the B P U at the time. And I think that's where, that needs to be taken care of separate from this, from this incident. Thoughts?
Agreed. Um, agreed.
Let me ask, what, in light of what you were saying, um, you're suggesting that if there was information that was sought, but it wasn't submitted, that the requesting authority to affirm that information, whatever it was they needed, would let it go because the authority said it was supposed to sign off, well, it's an elected official, so I'm gonna let it go and not get.
I'm not, I have no idea what was the thought process of the, of the staff in this case. I have no idea.
I'm trying to restate what I thought.
No, no, I just know it's incumbent upon me as the person who's signing up for the benefit and who's trying to put my bene, my additional dependence on the same thing. I mean, I don't know, you know, what the language is. You know, I always feel like, no matter what I sign, I always feel like it's under the penalty of perjury, right? I mean, you know, you're a trained lawyer, you know this. I mean, that's what I always feel like. And I'm not saying that that language is there, but, you know, I have an obligation to be truthful with my employer, with my, you know, regardless of how, you know, the employer's, you know, H R department acts or reacts to something, truly.
And that's right. But at this time, if H R, in this case, requested or did not request whatever that information is, that the person, the elected, was supposed to have submitted and they didn't receive it, but they signed off for, in this case, the benefit, the health benefit anyway. Is it because they waived it? They waived what they should have done? The H R person?
Don't know.
Does that, if in fact they did allow that to occur?
I mean, what this, what we're talking about here is whether or not this elected official violated section one fifteen of our ethics policy. That's what, that's what this is. And there has to be, um, given the fact pattern, there has to be some complicity in this by the elected official that this elected official knew um, what their status was at that time. And so to me, that gets to whether or not, um, that, you know, I mean, we can play semantics all day, but.
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to cut through the semantics and understand what it is that you're suggesting procedurally and where the responsibility lies, uh, either with the utility that authorized when they had not received documentation or with the person whose veracity, in this case, the elected official who signed up for it was, who's responsible, cutting through the semantic.
Who's receiving the benefit they didn't, who's receiving a benefit that they were not authorized to receive?
Who conferred the benefit that was received? What author does that?
I mean, and here we are.
No, no, no semantics. So Blue Cross Blue Shield, I think, is the health provider.
That's correct.
So Blue Cross Blue Shield relies upon, they don't know who the applicants are, if it's an elected official, if it's anyone.
That's right.
They take Blue Cross Blue Shield, the information that they require, and I guess it's all set out, what they need, certificates, what have you. And they just take the completed application to apply insurance. Right?
I don't know the process. I've, I've ever been on that side of the process, but I don't, so I, I don't know.
The question is, who's responsibility to turn everything in to Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Ultimately, I think it's the responsibility of the applicant to be truthful with the insurance provider.
Oh, and I, and I, I'm sorry, let me, let me, I'm saying that, that once a benefit is received and the knowledge of it is, is made aware by the recipient, that recipient should notify, um, the company and say, hey, I received the benefit. That's, that's what we are obligated to do as elected officials. Once we receive the benefit from anywhere, we're, we're obligated to inform, uh, whoever, uh, provided the, the benefit, that either we cannot accept it or we, that our governing body knows that, hey, I received the benefit and I need to report that.
And Stevie, to your point, the benefit wasn't accidentally conferred. It was conferred because someone filled out a form and said, I would like coverage for these other people. It wasn't a clerical error. It was because a form was filled out by the elected official requesting that benefit. And we're talking about ratepayers voting the bill. I mean, this is, it's not a cost to utility, it's a cost to the community.
That's right. And as fiduciaries of this utility, I mean, you know, we have an obligation.
And, and our, our scope is narrow, right? There are other implications with insurance or, or the legality of ours is violation or not of the ethics policy and what's, what does that mean for the board? And, you know, decision we make, sure doesn't affect any, you know, Department of Insurance or law enforcement or whoever else they look into this. Ours is just the ethics policy and is this a, was an improper benefit intentionally sought? And to me, the, unless there's reason to think that the person seeking it is ignorant of the consequences or unqualified to fill out the paperwork. They filled out the paperwork that was, that, that was their intention, was to receive that benefit.
I can see a potential, um, possibility of expecting one, one thing out of a relationship. And then something changing in the time between the application and, and the benefit. But once you know, I mean, then that, that, that should be made aware.
Well, and in that scenario, I'm imagining if, if, if there was a marriage and then at some point it was no longer, right? Then that would be a different issue. In this case, we would update it. What was represented on the form was not through at the time and has stayed not for.
Stays, the, the time.
Has remained the same, I guess.
What are our, what, what as a board, what are our, what can we do?
And I will let the ethics administrator try, she might, um, want to add to this, but it. And I will let the Ethics Administrator try. She might want to add to this, but it, the code refers to any, like, any elected official found by the VP Board of Directors to have violated the provisions of the ethics policy may be subject to action as determined by majority vote of the VP Board of Directors in accordance with this provision of the policy. And then it does talk about such violations may be sufficient grounds for removal from office and the basis for ouster proceedings as provided by law. This policy does not give you the authority to do that. That would have to be something to the court system. But, for example, I know in the past censorship has been issued to a board member, and that's the only example that I am aware of, is a censor previously being issued.
When, what would that, what does that entail?
It entails a finding by a majority of the Board of Directors that the policy was violated and then that you determine that that is the action you wish to take or one of the actions you wish to take.
And what does censor mean?
It means it's a, it's a formal reprimand.
Does, does the BPU get re, re, remade whole? Do, is that part of it or not part of it? What?
So there is, in another section, reference to, to collections, you know, you could certainly direct that that be done. I don't, you know, you can't, this, you cannot issue a judgment, you know, there would still have to be, you could certainly say that you wish for that to be collected as a group. Any discussion, when we talked about executive sessions earlier, that was, you know, I made clear that any civil claim or lawsuit, those discussions of a litigation, a lawsuit or a claim, that actually could be done in executive session. So you could discuss the recoupment of the financial expenditures by the BPU. You could discuss that in executive session. You could also issue a direction that that, that the legal department, that you wish for the legal department to pursue collection measures.
Is this something that, is, is it be something that would be turned over to the District Attorney's Office to look at, to see whether there's criminal liability or fraud? What?
Yes, that can be done. I mean.
Or is these things that, that we could set down and negotiate or make an agreement with the elected official that I, I agree to do this, 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 and you agree to do this, 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 this?
It's, this is more of a finding by the board that the board finds this. Now, when it comes to the recoupment of the funds, certainly, as with most lawsuits or claims, there are, there generally are some negotiations, yeah, for settlement purposes, and the board could enter into those. And that, again, discussions with me could occur in executive session for that, for that. And, but that, that could be a negotiation process. But, you know, again, defer to the Ethics Administrator, but this is more of findings, the ethics policy refers to more pint, or excuse me, findings than negotiations.
So if we vote, we find that there was, that there was a violation, where does, what happens next?
Then, if you find that there's a violation and then you wish to censor, I think at that point, it would become public who the member was to censor. And then that would be entered into the record.
Angela, or maybe this is a chairmaid question. I know, you know, board member is a unique role, but the receiving health insurance through the BPU is something that, you know, is available to non-elected employees as well. Were a similar fact pattern found with a non-elected employee, can you walk through, we have very limited scope here, right? Because it's an elected employee. But if it were a non-elected employee, what, what would that look like?
Sure. So it, you know, probably an easiest case to talk about is if, you know, somebody used too much, say, time, and then they resigned their employment before they actually accrued that. We would then go through the process of collecting that, withholding their last check, all those kinds of things. So if, if any regular employee, a non-elected employee had similar situation, we would step through the exact same investigation process and recovery process for whatever we were out. And then obviously, regular employees are subject to other discipline or the handbook or the CBA or both, up to and including termination.
If, if, and if this is too on the nose, that's okay. But if, if a continuing employee was found to have inaccurate health insurance enrollment information and, you know, benefits were paid out that shouldn't have been, is there, do we have a process for that?
We do. We would investigate it with, as we would any other disciplinary infraction, and it would be considered falsification of records, if I'm not mistaken, which is terminable offense.
Thank you.
I just don't see that we have, what, I mean, we can send, I don't see that censors, what, I mean, it is, I mean, it's something, but I think that if there was a willful, willful violation, or we, if there's a willful violation, then, you know.
And if, if you, if you're speaking of recoupment of funds, and that, that, that is a topic for executive session to speak with the attorney about.
I've just consulted with counsel here with the, or at this administrator to share, this topic is indeed about me, that I am the elected official, surprise. The concern that I have is, and by the way, tremendously well-put, well-betted report. To take two minutes or less, it comes down to one thing here. During the application process, met with our general manager at the time, Mr. Johnson, Bill Johnson, and her name is Cunningham, Ms. Cunningham, both of whom are no longer here. And I disclosed forcefully and repeatedly that I was not married, legally married, to a friend. And I was told it was okay by Mr. Johnson. And later during that interview process, December 29th, by Ms. Cunningham, to list my significant other, some 15 years in the spouse section. I had the authority and the permission from full disclosure. There was no will for, willful, which is what bothers me the most, is the question as to whether or not I would be untruthful in that. I thought, thought to this time, and in fact, someone has said, boy, don't you wish that you had said, can you initial that? Or can you jot it down that you had filmed what you said at that time? That would have solved a whole lot. Because Bill Johnson said, well, just put it down. Just, just put it down. And Ms. Cunningham, that's her name, after the interview, said, it's fine. The question that I asked to follow up to Roses is if there were some, had that not been disclosed, that there was no marriage certificate, and they weren't questioning my children, they didn't ask birth certificates either, of the two minor children that are on it. But had that not been disclosed, why? Or, and if it were an issue, why would they not? Now, they, as is in the report, they claimed that there was a follow-up email to send us the documents. Haley sent us the documents. I never got the email. I went through my email stream. I forwarded that email stream to, and they did not produce the email stream to say that we need some additional documentation for, to affirm your spouse's life and/or your children. So it comes down to this. My ethics are being called for my veracity for remembering what did occur. Discussions I did have at the time I was coming here and leaving my employment and my, my coverage somewhere else to get that here. And I had authority from who I thought was the one who could authorize. And I, I shared that with, that was the GM and the HR person who they had at my interview to list as my spouse, someone that I'm not legally married to, as others have stepped in the shoes and other departments for domestic partners and what have you. That is the crux of what brings us all here today. That's the crux of what this investigation. And by the way, the counsel for Blue Cross Blue Shield, whom I met in surprise meeting in this room and was deposed. And the long and short of it is, I was told that it was all right to list her as, as my spouse. He has said, from what I understand, said it did not occur. I've not spoken with Mr. Johnson. He has said it didn't occur. Fairness to him who's not here. She has said, Ms. Cunningham, who I understand Mr. Brown was in touch with, has not been able to produce the emails that she suggested existed to say, yes, we do need to have that information to process your form. Which goes back to my question, would someone blow off the need to have certificates, in your mind, or in someone's mind, because it's an elected official, so I won't do due diligence and just let it go? I haven't heard anything about this. The one who's acting as my spouse in the spouse capacity has had limited but significant health coverage, as have my minor children. I was presented with a letter from Ms. Lawson last week, and I called for a meeting here because I would not want custom and practice of what may have been maybe fast and loose in HR for other hires, just because of my being discovered during the time that all of our, our, you know, we changed over, to have affected or disaffected others who may too have been retained without having their, all of their paperwork in order. So I just want you each to know. I want everybody in the room, I guess, wherever. Of course, they talk about October surprises. This is potentially, which is my concern, this October surprise, that I don't like my ethics being called into questions. I've been around a long time. I've got a good reputation. I only listed because I had permission, with the awareness prior to signing, saying that she was not my spouse. And that is, well, that's the truth. Mr. Johnson and I do not agree on that, from what I understand. But it is the truth.
And that's kind of where, where the he said, she said, and until we have, you know, how do we, there, without the evidence?
I guess one thing I'm stuck on, why was the general manager involved with your insurance enrollment?
One involved in mine at all.
That's the practice with any person enrolling.
Well, in my case, not only was general manager, and were they involved, and, and I didn't know, Ms. Cunningham, Andrea Cunningham, but someone else who assisted was Mr. Melhoff. I remember Dennis was there. And I mean, we said hello.
I was there.
But, you know, but.
So you were there when he signed up, because?
Yes.
Can you step up to the table, please? Can someone give him, thank you, Angie? Okay, so you were in attendance. I apologize. I'm now, I don't mean to, you were in attendance when he, when Mr. Haley, when Senator Haley signed up for his initial insurance in 2021 at BPU?
Yes, yes. So I, and I have it on my calendar here. I just verified that I was there initially. Andrea Cunningham and I met with Senator Haley, and then he had a follow-up meeting with David Melhoff and Bill Johnson after that. So we had requested the documents at, at that point. So initially.
So verbally, you requested the documents because you were in a face-to-face meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we do that with every one of them. So.
That's right.
We do that in advance of the meeting and tell you what to bring.
Yep.
We then at the meeting asked for it again, if you don't, if you don't have it. And then subsequently, Andrea's told me, and then, you know, I remember after a board meeting with Mr. Haley and one of the, either late January, early February, coming up and saying after the meeting, hey, we still haven't received your documents. Please provide those. Andrea subsequently left BPU later that year without having received those documents. And at some point, you forget, you know, what are you, what's still out there and what's not with 500 employees, you know? And then, you know, subsequently, we still don't have those documents, right? We requested them in 2025 and still don't have those. So, I mean, they're not there and they're not ever going to be there. So whether Mr. Johnson gave you permission or not, that's between you and Mr. Johnson. I don't, you know, my conversations with Andrea subsequent to, to this issue, she intimated to me that she never, ever gave any employee or elected official approval not to provide those documents.
But could you call anytime in the enrollments process, someone would have been told they can list someone who's a partner but not a spouse? At least in that time, you know, timeframe?
We would have an affidavit of common law marriage, essentially, is, is what we asked for.
But it wouldn't be ordinary for any, anyone involved in that process, all the way up to the general manager, to tell someone that they.
No.
Should list someone who's not.
And if we find out an employee hasn't been truthful to us, or, you know, whether it's, you know, providing birth certificates or, you know, adoption papers or, you know, whatever it might be, divorce, we, you know, they keep our, their spouse on for a significant amount of time, you know, that, that's a terminable offense, as Jeremy said, so.
At the initial time of, of, at the application, and you said, or somebody informed the senator that he needed documentation of this or that, did he, did he relate to you at that time that he wasn't married and didn't intend to be married?
No.
So you were, you were of the belief, and the staff was of, or was of the belief that he was either married or common law marriage?
That's correct.
And that this, that these people that he had listed on his application were legitimate?
That is my belief as to, you know, Misty, I, you know, I don't know what Andrea Cunningham's testimony was to you. I believe that that's what she felt as well, but I, you know, I can't speak to that directly.
If I may, when I did speak with Ms. Cunningham, she was very clear that she never gave Senator Haley approval to list a domestic partner as a spouse. When following up, what Senator Haley indicated that that primary discussion was with Bill Johnson, I did interview Bill Johnson, and he was very vehement in his denial that he gave any permission to do so. I'd like to also clarify, I asked Ms. Cunningham, would you have sent any follow-up email if you were missing any documents? She said, I would have sent an email. And so we did search IT to see if there was follow-up emails of, please send them, please send them. Could not find that. I also spoke with Dennis, and he had advised that he had spoke with Senator Haley after a meeting, asking for follow-up with the documentation. He did this because both Dennis and Andrea confirmed she had went to Dennis to say, we still can't get documentation.
I think the, the struggle that I'm having with some of this is, I, I understand that someone might not recall the details of a conversation from three, four years ago. Just, I mean, you can ask me conversations I had in 2022. I'm probably, can't tell you the exact details, but I, I think what I could say with some authority, and I think someone else in the same shoes could be, is, no, I would not have given advice that contradicts the rest of BPU policy for 500 other employees in a meeting. I, I don't have to remember my ex- I don't have to remember my exact words to know that that would not have been something that I would have said. And that's where I put a lot of veracity in Mr. Johnson's comments because, as Dennis said, that that's not a thing. That's not, no one has given that permission or that guidance. So it would seem very odd that not only would they not remember doing so, but that they would have given that guidance to one person of 500 against the rest of the policies. I'm struggling to put that together, I guess.
Well, again, that is what occurred. I did have a conversation and I did, the first was with Bill Johnson prior to the meeting. The first time that I shared with him. And I do have, and I'll be glad to share with each of you. I underscored, this was the original application. And I said, I'm not married. There's a box to check. I'll be happy to pass this around. This is a copy of it. You know, check your marital status. I didn't check married or single. And I explained that to Ms. Cunningham to Andrea. And I thought I would have to Dennis, I believe so. As to why I'm not married, but I'm still listing the spouse, though I'm unmarried in that as a domestic partner. And that I'd had clarity in talking with Bill Johnson about it. And subsequent to that, he had said, it was fine, just fill it in. Now, the authority that he has to it may be in question now, and I understand that. He may not have had the ability to make that call. But I'm new coming to GM, talking to GM, I talk with personnel. Here is my application for health benefits. And in item eight, where it asks for marital status, I left it unchecked and I explained to them why it was left unchecked.
And you didn't check single either, right?
I didn't check single, no.
Which you could have checked single.
And in fact, should have checked.
That should have.
I guess, earlier, Tom, you said we're left with a, you know, he said, he said. But at this point, we're building up a pretty good list of people who independently have a different account. And again, I know this is, you know, this is not a court of law. We have a very narrow scope. It's up to us to decide whether or not the the policy was violated or not based on the evidence presented, but to me, there's a lot more evidence saying this special permission didn't happen because we have that independently accounted for by several people whose job it is to work enrolling people. I mean, one of the aspects of their job is this process. And they know the process and they know the conversations that they would be likely to have with someone. And what a normal practice and what a, sounds like very abnormal practice would be. And we have at least three now saying, conversation that was alleged to happen didn't happen.
So why did they not send out some follow-up? Why was there, if in every case for every employee, that there was not a follow-up, if information had not been presented? Why is there no paper trail?
Why would Bill Johnson not have offered you an affidavit of common law marriage? If he gave you permission, because that's a process BPU has, and he would have gone to Dennis. I just, David, I have a hard time. I never spoke whatsoever of anything about benefits here when I onboarded here. Not one word to Bill. None. I spoke with Andrea Cunningham and David Melhoff, but really Andrea Cunningham. I mean, I just like, why would I have spoken with Bill? Why would I not have spoken with the head of HR at that point, which was Dennis, still is? I mean, I mean, that's who you go to to speak about HR issues, right? So I just, I find that, you know, I guess, I mean, I'm having a little trouble with that one.
I'm not suggesting that it was the best idea to affirm through him. But I'm only saying for the purposes of this, from ethics, from standpoint, from doing the full disclosure, what I did and not doing it to deceive or to be deceitful or to be fraud, that I did disclose. There was full disclosure that I was not legally married prior to issuing this to Bill Johnson. I still suggest it was done at some point subsequent to others, including, that's all I'm saying.
You have a Juris Doctorate.
Yes, indeed.
You're a JD.
I utilize it and there are points of authority.
Really, I'm supposed to believe that you wouldn't have that, that you yourself wouldn't have that in writing from Bill Johnson? I'm supposed to believe that? As another, as another JD?
Absolutely.
I mean, I follow up everything in writing because I always want to make, like, if I'm gonna do a thing.
We had, I had no idea. Had I known, if I could turn back the hands of time.
Amen.
That this would have happened, but for the purposes of where we are here, it was full disclosure to an authority and authorities who are responsible for the governance of our being here. Who had I'd worked with. And frankly, I'd sat down and talked with Bill prior to, right after I got elected, actually, before being sworn in. Seen him in a couple of things. I talked to him about it. He was well-versed. I told him it was full disclosure, as I did subsequently. There was no, in other words, fraudulent or deceptive listing here on my part. That I was in a married relationship. I did not represent myself.
Okay, I'm going to read the language of 115, subparagraph A. An elected official, official or employee shall not intentionally use the prestige of his or her office for his or her own private gain or that of another, except as may be permitted under this ethics policy. That's what we're here to determine right now, right? So regardless of whether or not the general manager gave you permission, that would not be, that is not even addressed in this ethics policy. So our analysis has to be whether you came into this, you know, situation and intentionally used your office to obtain a private gain for yourself or for another. I mean, that's all we're here to do, right? Because that is our narrow scope. So I understand, I understand the the defense that you're putting on here. But you knew at the time you were not married to your significant other in 2021, correct?
And disclosed at the time.
You knew you were not married to your significant other.
And disclosed that.
So intentionally, you used your office to gain this benefit for another. I mean, that's how I'm reading this in the context of the opinion we received. And I'm, others, obviously, please weigh in, but, I mean, it's just a narrow scope.
In the narrow scope, of course. I mean, benefit, that's conferred through health benefits that we get for our families all the time.
This isn't a benefit that everyone gets all the time. This is something that.
No, I mean, that's a part of the job. What I'm saying is a part of what comes along.
Right. What you're saying is you've got special permission from the general manager to get a benefit not available to 500 other employees.
For their significant others that they were not married to or in a common law marriage with.
And at the time, but I certainly do now, I did not know that that was not the province of the general manager. Was that customary? Was that something that could have been done? Imagine for a moment that they could have, could they, that a GM or someone else can say, sign up in that particular line. I didn't know that. Of course, certainly now we do. I thought that they were, and I thought through disclosure, which is right here, at this time, that that was, that was fine. Was that a benefit conferred to another? Was I using my position to do that? I mean, in the very narrow scope, one could say that. Did I deceive or was I deceptive?
This isn't about deception. This is about whether you intentionally.
No, this is an ethic. I mean, well.
But this is our narrow scope. This is our narrow scope.
Touched under.
This is our narrow scope. Like, we don't have any other purview here, right? I mean, whatever else, we, you know, sort of alluded to some of this. Whatever else happens outside of here with regard to this matter, we don't have any purview over.
Yeah, there was no deception to obtain the benefit.
Again, this is whether or not it was intentionally done. I mean, that's how I'm, maybe I'm not reading the provision correctly. I read it aloud.
It was intentionally.
Please wait.
Everyone who was a part of the process was made well aware of that category.
Well, Dennis was part of the process. If he's saying he's not made.
Saying that now.
But Bill Johnson says that he was not aware and Ms. Cunningham says that she was not aware. And so, David, I appreciate that you don't want your credibility questioned, but in order to believe your credibility, I now have to undermine the credibility of at least three other people. And also believe that the general manager at the time gave you permission to do something that he would not have, would never have had a discussion with anyone else about, but specifically gave you a special benefit not available to anyone else. And I'm having a hard time disbelieving the other people with different accounts. And then even if I do that, believing that the general manager at the time would have said anything remotely in the ballpark of what we're discussing here to one person, knowing that that goes against every other practice for 500-plus employees.
My concern is that it went on and on and on, year after year after year, for how many years? The three or four? And I'm like, somewhere in there, it should have been, it should have been reported. Should have been corrected. We hired the general manager. We don't, I mean, we don't go to him for, you know, I mean, I don't go to him for HR advice. I expect HR manager to deal with matters related to the operations of BPU, not HR matters. So I'm having a difficult time understanding how it went on for so long without something being said or done. As, as, as an elected official, I wouldn't feel comfortable going that long with that happening. That's why I have a problem with that going on for so long. I would have, I think I would have tried and did something after the benefit came and I said, hey, you know, this is a benefit to me. I need to report this. And particularly when you, when you understand the role of the general manager. And not really try to defend our reputation as a, as a, as a utility, as a public utility. I truly try to defend it, try to make sure that our reputation in the community is such where, where they, they, they understand us to be people who try to live by the book, you know, and try to do everything correctly. Because there's too much misinformation out there about, you know, corruption, you know? And I try to make sure that, that, that's why I address every, every concern that was out there with BPU to make sure that I could defend us, being a part of it. I want to make sure I can defend us. And I don't want us to do anything inappropriate that would offend any law-abiding citizen. I just don't have a problem with that.
I have a problem with that too. I agree. I like us all to be beyond reproach and to be above board. I've always conducted, again, I suggest in very strongly that I've always conducted myself beyond reproach. And obviously, an error was made on my part to take his word at it, Bill Johnson's, and then to have it affirmed that I listed it. I did not misrepresent that I'm married. It's in the application. I'm not married. But that my significant other should be, should be covered under the line I spouse. There's no, I don't know what the definition of spouse is. I have since been provided with it. But you hear a lot of terms for who one significant other is. Domestic partner. I mean, there are a lot of different, so I listed that person. Domestic partner, significant other, whatever, as a spouse. And I did disclose that prior, and that's what it comes down to. I mean, I don't.
But you willfully did not check the box, single.
Exactly. Or married.
Or married, but you didn't.
It's an A or B, either, either or. This point is a motion in order. I don't want to rush anyone, but I also don't want to belabor the point. Yes, Angie, you tell me if I'm getting the words right. I move that the board finds Mr. Haley in violation of the cited ethics policy from the report.
This is Rose. I second the motion.
I can speak, but go ahead, go ahead.
And to clarify, that was section 115?
Thank you, yes. I would just make notes as we go through here. I think in order to believe that it wasn't violated, I have to believe several things. I have to believe that Senator Haley, who has a Juris Doctorate, who has been elected to this board, who has served for a long time in the state legislature, did not know on his own, regardless of any other advice, the proper way to fill out that form and what he was representing. I have to believe that Bill Johnson is not telling the truth. I have to believe that Dennis is not telling the truth. I have to believe that Ms. Cunningham is not telling the truth. And then after all of that, I have to believe that we had a general manager at the time who was willing to engage in a conversation to give a special benefit to one employee of a 500-plus employee organization. And if it were one of these things, I guess I'd be a little bit more hung up, but I'm really, I struggle to think that all five of those things are the, the three of those people are lying that, David, you didn't know better when you filled out the form and that we would have a general manager who would give that off-the-wall of guidance, I think, goes beyond what I can believe. And so then I'm left with, it was intentional. And we have a duty as this board to, narrow as the scope may be, make a finding and move forward with any actions that are appropriate to that. I think we have a duty to the ratepayers. It is their money that this has cost.
In my closing, obviously, I've accused myself from the vote and going to excuse myself prior to the vote being taken, understandably. But I will say that I did not selectively make application. I did have affirmation prior to doing, I understand that was saying what you're saying, but I would not have done this. I would not have made the application. Were that not the case, everything that I saw that occurred, that's what occurred. You can take the word of those others, but I would not have done that. And if there had been a follow-up, which there was not, I would have, there was not a follow-up because they knew at the time that I was not married, so they did not request additional paperwork because they were fully aware that that had already been done at the time of the application. There is no paper trail that shows with no follow-up. I don't recall any after-meeting with Dennis to say we need your paperwork regarding anything. And certainly, this body and others move with email back and forth. When I pulled up the email trail looking for this, it's a host of everything. There's nothing from HR, and there shouldn't have been because they already knew what the status was at the time that I made applications. So it does, I would hope defy logic that there would not have been an effort to get that paperwork and that there would be something to substantiate that they had, which of course I would have reminded them that I said that it didn't exist in the first place. But there is no such paperwork. I don't know if there's any other discussion, if there is, but if not, I obviously will recuse myself from this vote. Excuse myself from the room.
I don't know that it's necessary that you leave the room. If you don't want to vote.
Well, no, I couldn't, I mean, you know what my vote is. My vote would be obviously against the motion. Well, no, I couldn't buy me for, you know what my vote is? My vote would be, uh, uh, obviously against the motion. What bothers me is to be considered unethical. Shakespeare said, he that steals my purse steals trash, but he that steals my reputation has it all. I have never been, in all my history, suggested, I have never been suggested that my veracity is any question or that my truth, or that I will deceive or fraudulent. I have four of it. It's the first time in thirty eight years of public life, thirty-two of them elected. I've been in a lot of different capacities. And my word, that's what I mean, to Stevie's point. Now, this is the October surprise, you know, Haley found unethical, you know, during the, you know, the course of this time is the election season. Now it's just, uh, it's unfortunate that it would come to this at this point, but I think the people that know me know me best. I don't lie. And I, I mean, I'll lie about something like this. I don't lie for a benefit. We got benefits. We all had benefits prior to coming here and will have them, but to suggest that we would go through this process, uh, all this process, uh, something that, that's what bothers, person that steals my reputation steals more. tries to steal my reputation. Uh, I suggest that I lied about that. I find it, uh, beyond dispassion, substantial.
So, so hold on a second, David. Are you suggesting that, that given the fact pattern that was given that this board should not have gone through this process tonight? We, we, we should all be above this ethics policy that we all agree to and we should be held accountable? Or I, I'm just trying to figure out what we've done wrong here.
No, ma'am. I, and I shared this with, um, with, with, um, Ms. Brown. This is a great exercise. It really achieves, again, diligent and thankful for being so responsive. I even contacted her outside the purview of this. This is good. This ought to be really employed more, uh, as often as possible as need be. I guess I'm the first test case for, uh, for Ms. Brown. And the process is good. It's essential, but there are a lot of, um, he said, she said, there's a, there's a lot of, um, gray area. And it's at a very, it's a major area for me in terms of my reputation, but there's a lot in play here and in terms of, uh, what will be found, what may be found here for, uh, what my reputation is. Google me. There's no history in all my time of anyone suggesting I've done anything untoward ever. In all of my, uh, elected years of, so there becomes a sphere, a mark on my name that should not be there because I didn't do anything. I, I did not, I was not deceptive. That's all I'm saying. A perfect record from all this time goes down. I didn't do anything any differently from all of my life. That's what it is. And that, the process is good. It's good exercise. I admire the manner in which it was handled. Uh, but coming from wherever it's coming from, really, at this particular time, especially, um, I find it, um, a little bit more than distasteful. If it's the decision at some point that they find that because she, and by the way, there's been a move to cut my children and my insurance off right now, health insurance right now, and of course hers. You know, all, uh, you know, punitive prior to that. And I just think the manner in which this proceeds, considering how this really came to pass, it is, I would hope that the principals understanding that politics does play a role sometimes, I would hope that somehow we find our, our better selves and, um, and find the best we can in each other and move forward from there. I'll take the hit after thirty-two years of.
Documentation was asked, you said my children. Are these your ki, are these your children?
Yes, sir. I didn't, because they are, they're my, they're my, they're under twenty-six. They're still covered under, uh.
They're your. The child or adopted kid?
Biological.
Biological.
Yes. Though I, I've learned a lot about adopted children, that a stepchild, one need not provide, um, um, a, a, um, what is it? If you, uh, if you legally adopt a stepchild, if you are married to the parent and you need not, um, be the adopted parent, you could still have them while you're healthy. I've learned that, but these are my, my biological children.
And you're on the birth certificate. You're listed as the father?
I am the father of both of them. And, um, that their health insurance, which they both need, would be interrupted when they had some heretofore under my previous policy. Um, understandably, what's happening with Rose, her name's Rose, with my tutitive domestic partner, arguably, but I think it's, um, and my, I'm, I'm in. I had great insurance for all this time. I've had stellar insurance, but even mine's in the lurch over some, I didn't, I did not do anything at all.
David, you filled out a document that said that this person should get benefits as your spouse. And that was not true. No one did that but you.
But the person who was the authority, who was running.
You are the authority on your paperwork that you attest to.
No, the authority is the one who collects all of the data, if you will, the affirming doc to submit. That's the one who, that's the one who's.
That's like me cheating on a school assignment and saying it's the teacher's fault. They didn't catch me sooner. I, I, if I am turning something in in my name, it is my responsibility to make sure that it is true.
If the teacher or the principal says, you can look at your, you can look at your notes to use it. Did you, did you cheat?
What we're given, I, I appreciate all of your words about your reputation and I take those to heart, but you are now calling into question several other people's reputation. And don't seem to be giving much thought to that.
Well, that's because it is what it is. The, the, the truth is, that's how we got here. We got here because and I didn't get in writing. I didn't get him to initial. I didn't get him to say that. It was a verbal awareness and assent to me writing that in. He was aware of that. And so, you know, and then she subsequently was made aware of that as well, which again, that's why they didn't send me any paperwork. I mean, some, oh, any requests for additional papers? Excuse me. Sorry. Would there be any, um, additional business beyond this on the agenda?
All the wrong.
Okay. Roll call. Kurt, call out the question. That's okay. Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
And so now that the, the majority of the board has found, um, Senator Haley in violation of the ethics policy, does, does, is there any appetite of the board? I mean, that doesn't count as a censure, right? We actually have to move to censure.
If that's what the board wishes.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I.
You would have to.
Limited in what.
Right. You, you, you have found.
Just to the rest of the board that, I mean, this is, you know, this is our sitting board president right now. And, um, like, you know, I, I'm personally, um, you know, I, I don't know that the president of, of the board of public utilities, um, who the board has found to have violated the ethics policy should maintain that same position, you know, through, um, you know, the rest of the year. I mean, it's, I mean, like I think of two things we can, we could do here because we don't have any other authority, but, and I'm not trying to be punitive. I just, you know, I don't think it's a good look for the board, I guess, is the point.
I, I, I agree. I, again, I think our responsibility is to the, you know, our presidents and ratepayers and we have a fiduciary responsibility on this board. And if we have found someone in violation of an ethics policy for actions that cost the utility money, um, I have a, I have a hard time going back to my community and saying that that person should remain in the officer role. And I know, again, our scope is very narrow here. We're not talking about anyone removed from their actual elected office as a member of the board. And there's, you know, other agencies outside of this board that can deal with the rest of this, but I, I think Rose is right. I think you hit on our two possibilities.
Thoughts? Um, my question, if we've taken, we've taken action and now we go forward, what remedy does Senator, the Senator have? Can we, are we liable for anything that we do? If he says that this damages my, my, my reputation in the community, and I'm going to sue you. Are we covered by director's insurance?
Yes, this would be acting within, well, if you'd be covered by the Kansas tort claims act because you're acting in your role as, um, board members and you, there's also director's insurance, but you are acting within your scope.
So, you know, he could sue us, but we would be acting by acting within our role. We're covered under something.
Right. Because the policy clearly states that this is the role of the board.
So personally, we wouldn't be held liable, or we would.
You, you would be covered, the, the, you would be covered by, um, the utility and insurance.
I'm got, you know, my, originally, when I, my thoughts were that censure and this doesn't seem like, we just say, okay, shame on you, you're censored, you know, go, go forward, don't sin no more. But like Brett's talking about, we have a fiduciary responsibility. How do we? That's what, what my question is about entering into a negotiation with him or an agreement.
That is a con, that is a conversation if, when we're talking about recoupment of the monetary expenses, I would suggest that we go into executive session to discuss that.
And if, if, if that, if an individual did that and we go into executive session and they say, I'm not paying nothing back. You can't do anything to me. What, what, what can?
So that, that's a legal advice that I would prefer to give in an executive session.
Okay.
But, I mean, happy to go into executive session if other board members want to.
But to, to, to be clear to those who may be listening, that would.
Only related to litigation related questions.
Yes.
Sorry.
Well, the Senator's already left and.
Yes. Well, but we would still want attorney client privilege because that would be an adversary party.
Yeah. So even, even if he were here, he could not be part of that executive session. I mean, I, I, I believe that he should not continue serving as board president. I'm happy to. Anyone wants to make motion or I'll make a motion and there's discussion on that, but I mean, that would be my stand.
Is, did we think we found even violating? Have we made the motion to censure?
No, so that may, makes sense as a.
You have any thoughts, comments?
No, I'm just disappointed, uh, that one of our fellow board members, uh, been found violation of ethics. Um, and, uh, that, that, like I said, I'm, I'm very protective of, of our reputation as a board and, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm still dealing with those, 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 uh, with motions right now. Um, but yeah, he probably needs to, uh, I hate making any decisions, uh, or any decisions regarding, uh, his role on the board, but, uh, president.
We didn't ask.
Yeah, he could have, he could have.
Exactly. He asked if there's anything else we need to, if nothing else on the agenda.
No, but if this is still related to item six.
It is. I mean, he's, he's welcome to come back.
Absolutely.
I guess Tom, to your point, we haven't taken action on censure, which if found someone in violation, that is the one official statement. I mean, it's a, feels a little redundant, I guess, to finding the violation, but.
Then not doing.
Yeah, but, but, I guess, uh.
I'd just like to have more clarity is what I, I, I asked.
I answered me.
That's the same question. That's the same question. Uh, does it just mean?
This is, I mean, for me, as, as a public official, as, as somebody who has been elected by this community to this board, as of all of you, you know, there are people out there, you know, putting their trust in us to represent this utility and, you know, our community's needs and interests, um, you know, to, to the best of our ability, we are, we are required to comply with the law. We are, we are required to comply with our ethics, ethics policy. And, you know, we're, I, I guess I'd take it one step further. We're required to be accountable to our public. And in this case, um, as has been alluded to multiple times, this is, this is ratepayer dollars. And so this is not something that I take lightly and I don't think any other board member does either. And so if, we all talk about accountability all the time. And I've yet to see any real accountability come about of anything that we see. And so if the best we can do as a board is to censure a fellow board member, I would expect to be censured in this case if this were, if this were me, if this fact pattern was about me, I would absolutely expect to be censured.
I, I, and I, and I agree. And I think that, you know, that's the next, the next step, but they're talking too about the community and our responsibility to the community. We need to take it further and try to get.
Which is.
Yeah, I agree.
Discuss in executive session.
And I mean, that's where I'm.
I understand that. I don't disagree with you at all.
I mean, just to say you're censured doesn't do.
That's right, but, but.
When we don't even know what being censured means.
It, I mean, it's an official record of wrongdoing. Okay, I mean, you, you're right. The more significant piece for ratepayers is being made whole and that kind of thing. That is a conversation that needs to be had too.
Now, the, the stripping of the presidency, is that done by, in executive session, is that done? If with part of the, part of the binding that he violated or how to.
It, it would be done in open session and it would be done however the board chooses with a, with a roll call vote.
Well, I guess as a first step, I, I would move that we censure our member Haley for violation of the ethics policy.
Second.
Open to discussion, but I don't want to belabor the point. I feel like.
I don't have any further discuss, I don't have any, but certainly open discussion.
Have to call for the vote.
Pardon?
You have to call for the vote.
Oh, I, oh, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Roll call please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Um, do we, is there, is, is, does any, do you all want to have any further discussion regarding, um, the presidency and, and whether or not the presidency of, of, of this now censured board member continues?
I, I, I kind of feel like, you know, Brett and like you, that, you know, it's not a good look for the, the BPU that the current sitting president is been found in violation of the ethics policy and, and, uh.
Angie, for clarification, if we did move forward with a vote to, I guess vacate that office, the next steps for then pointing or voting in a president, is that something we could, we would do here tonight? Is that something? Is that something we could do at the October regular session?
For the vice chair or the vice president would move up for the president?
I would recommend a vote and you could, the board could decide whether to do that before on October 2nd. That would be the board, but I would recommend if that's the course of action, to do it no later than October 2nd. First, October 1st, thank you.
Any further discussions or motion?
Angie, you're going to have to make sure I get the, the wording correct. But do we end the term early? What, what's the, the mechanism?
You could either vote that the term of the current president ends effective, um, immediately, or you could vote to, to remove him from the office of presidency, effective immediately.
Preference, and then a vote would, would ensue afterwards?
Correct, if there was.
Election, election.
Assuming there's a second, then there would be a roll call.
Then election, coming election, would, would ensue that subsequently.
Yes, you could probably wait till October 1st to put it on the agenda, or you could do it this evening because it is needed to fill those roles.
If, if the motion were to pass, wouldn't it just go automatically to the vice president?
It did, the, um, procedure doesn't contemplate that. It contemplates more of a temporary absence, so I would recommend that the board vote.
Any other discussion?
Vice President, are you ready and willing to turn about the end of that term if we cut that or?
I, I.
Busy enough?
I actually would, would, I, I'd prefer that another board member serve in that capacity.
I'm not going to put any, well, I guess maybe this is the car before the horse, but don't want to put anyone on the spot. But I guess with that, I would propose that maybe one of our tuned to retire board members on interim basis would take that on. That bridge when we come.
Mary's out here.
Okay, well, I, I move that we remove board member Haley from the office of president effective today.
This is Rose, I second. A roll call, please.
I'm still, any discussion on the most?
But you came back.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just reiterate what I said before, which is, um, again, very small scope of actions here as the board, but, um, we do have a fiduciary responsibility and we have found an ethics violation, um, that has to do with ratepayer money, um, being improperly used, I suppose. And so it, to me, it does not make sense to, uh, continue with board member Haley in that office. Obviously, it doesn't affect him remaining a, a member of the board of public utilities, but, and with the narrow, uh, set of options in our control, I think that's a reasonable step and one that has folks accountable to our, you know, presidents and ratepayers and voters in our community, um, we ought to take.
Further discussion, given the scope of the censure this evening that was put, uh, hasty, but I accept the, of course, the, uh, opinion. But there has been no malfeasance shown in terms of, um, how I have attempted to, um, serve as board president. I don't think, um, I, I don't know if there's ever been in the history of this utility. Probably Tom or Mary would know that there's been any such activity along this line or, or that a president, uh, or whatever, inside of the utility or outside of the utility, whatever actions, would not continue to serve at least three, two, two months left, uh, as we know. Yes, three. So I, I realize that there's another, will be some other stages of this, you know, as to whether or not there's, uh, responsibilities, um, regarding the other action, restitutions or what other actions there might be in the future. But in terms of this, it's, it's, I think, unduly punitive, um, given the scope. Obviously, I would, but it's unduly, I would say this honestly, if it were anyone else, uh, of the five of you, it would be unduly punitive to not allow them to continue to serve. So if it were January, February, maybe, but it's, it's not going to make it. We do have some big moments in front of us. We've got the budget and some other areas to get through. It's, it's just undoing, that's, that's my two cents.
Yes, I would just say as another officer, I serve at the pleasure of the other five members of this board. Um, and.
Right.
Uh, who were, that's, you know, we're sitting for, if the, the facts were the same for me, I, I would expect to no longer serve in this particular officer role.
No questions or the discussion? Roll call, please, Angela, Ms. Lawson.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries. I thought you were recusing yourself from this as part of the censure.
I was on the other, uh, but I won't say that I did pass on the vote that I was here and passed.
Pass, okay.
I recused myself on the issue of.
And you wished to pass, so I would call your name, Wakes, or excuse me, I'm looking, geez, I've crossed out Haley.
Pass.
That motion carries. Sorry.
So, um, I thank you all for your service. I think we should name a, an acting president. Um, and I would, um, think we need to have someone to assume the mantle immediately. And, um, I don't know if you all can, I would nominate, uh, someone who's got the skill set and has done it very well, better than any of our, nominate Tom Groneman to serve as board president, uh, for the balance of, uh, of the term.
This is Rose, I second.
Tom, do you have thoughts?
My, I like the idea. My thought would be that we keep the officers intact and we just move you in as, as a president.
I, I guess, uh, my thought is, I, none of these are easy decisions and I don't want it to be about anyone moving up. I, that's why I, I kind of like the idea of an interim person, the normal process.
Elaine, don't get you up.
Elaine, it's me.
Straight way to wrap up, distinguished him. Further discussion or any other nominations? Uh, Ms. Lawson.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman. Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries, congratulations.
Mr. President, do you wish to go into executive session for?
I think that we probably.
Topics.
Yeah, don't need to carry this on out longer than necessary. So I would entertain a motion to go. Do we have to publish that we're going in?
No, the, that is the means of conducting the meeting and since this is part of the recovery is permissible under the ethics policy, it, it falls under the ethics discussion. I do have a question, is it easier for us to stay in here and have everyone removed? Or for us to go, okay.
I don't have to switch the video settings or anything like that. I can just shut the audio and video off and display the executive session. Notice on the, on the screen for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ten, ten minutes.
Fifteen minutes? Is that enough?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I have a proposed motion.
We have a two-minute break.
Okay.
Two-minute break.
Does that affect your?
Uh, we'll have to, someone have to help me with the mail. Okay. I move that after taking, the proposed motion is, I move that after taking a two-minute break, board members Parker, Groneman, Wakes and Mulvaney Henry go into executive session in the first floor conference room until eight seventeen PM to consult with our attorney and to discuss under the attorney-client privilege confidential matters related to potential, um, claims and/or litigation as permitted under the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that the general manager, Jeremy Ash, our attorney, Angela Lawson, and staff member Dennis Dumovich be present to participate in the discussion and that we reconvene in open session at eight seventeen in the conference room located on the first floor.
And, um, before there's a second, why would I be excluded?
Because.
What is your rationale for that?
Um, and there's an attorney general's, uh, opinion on point because there's your, um, interests are adversarial now to this. So there cannot be, they cannot consult with their attorney with, and it's an adversarial, um, situation.
And this again is to discuss which aspect of the central, of, of the proceedings?
It, recruitment of, recruitment of fans.
Alright.
So moved.
Rose, I second.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Do you want me to call so you can pass?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, Haley.
No.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries. And we will now have a two-minute break before we enter executive session.
You have a motion to extend the executive session for, from eight seventeen to eight thirty?
This is Rose, so move.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries, we will be going back into executive session.
Uh, coming out of, uh, coming out of executive session and I would entertain a motion.
For?
Sure. Do we, Angie, do you have, or do you want me to do my best and you tell me if I'm on track? Or, go ahead.
Uh, I move that we, the board directs, uh, acting chief counsel to continue pursuing, um, collection efforts of the monies that were expended as a result of the issue we discussed tonight.
Second. Any discussion?
Wait a second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn.
Wait a second. Okay, so we moved in second, we adjourn, roll call.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries, we are adjourned.